Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Present.
Alderman Steve Smith, City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
You've been provided a copy of the minutes of previous meeting for the regular session of July 13th, 2021. You have a chance to check those minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of "I."
Aye.
All opposed, here and none. Motion carries without opposition. Next item would be proclamations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor. And I really don't have anything, but I have a thanks that I'd like to convey. Many of you know that Tennessee Picnic celebrated the 8th of August this past weekend. It was a very much scaled down version of our usual activities, but it went very well. I'd like to thank everyone in the room who participated in helping us set it up and get it started, including the city of Newport, who allowed us to use facilities at the Riverwalk, our colleague, Ms. Luanna Odinger, who gave us some great publicity on her radio station, and others who were present that helped us out. And Chief Schultz with his deputies at our traffic control at the city park during the run walk. I'm probably leaving someone out, but I still appreciate it. And I think Lynn did do a nice video for us through the chamber, and we really appreciate everything you did. Tim Dockry, of course, also helped us out. So if I've left anyone out, charge it to my head and not my heart. Thank you.
Pardon me?
Forget it now.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think as everybody is aware, the COVID has had a resurgence and has reared its ugly head within the city. We have had one employee test positive and has been out. Fortunately, they weren't adversely affected, and we should be back to work Thursday. We've had a couple of other employees that have had to be quarantined, and we're just going to go with it as we can. Hopefully, this thing will do like it did in Europe and start to go back down in a week or two, if it follows the same trend as it did over there. But the numbers are up in the region. It's amazing. They tripled and quadrupled in some places around us. And ours are up around 170 right now here after being down to single digits. And so we're going to continue to do our due diligence as much as possible, but we have to stay open and in business. So just try to recommend to everybody, if they've not been vaccinated, to get vaccinated. Our employees are right around 40% that have been vaccinated, which is not very good out of 125 or 30 employees. So, you know, the person that tested positive, it was not a choice on their behalf about the vaccine. They're allergic to, they can't take anything that was incubated in an egg. They're allergic to eggs. So they can't take a flu shot or anything. So it wasn't a choice by them. They just couldn't take it. But they have, they have developed the virus, fortunately, without any adverse reaction so far. The other thing, or the next thing I want to talk about, and I'm not going to get too off in depth on it because it would be here longer, I'd take longer than Frank's going to take if I got too deep off into this. But within your packet, in the sleeve of your book, you have this sheet right here. And this is a list that Fire Chief Shelton put together at my request to show about training that we are planning on having for our men. And we were looking at joining the Tennessee Association of Rescue Squad as an associate member. A lot of fire departments have done that. And by being an associate member, it allowed us to get training at a discounted rate. And we got somehow, we got caught up into a feud, for lack of a better term, that has been going on between the emergency management, the county emergency management director and the Cock County Rescue Squad. And, you know, I've met with the emergency management director. I've met with the rescue squad to try to get to the bottom of what was going on and how we got pulled into it. And so I think I've kind of got it worked out. I think they understand. I was very clear to them, to the rescue squad in particular, and also to the emergency management director, that, you know, we are committed, the city Newport is committed to the rescue squad. We would never recommend or be a part of trying to do away with the rescue squad in any way, form, or fashion. But they, they were convinced that, that we were going to play a role in trying to eliminate the rescue squad. And so when our membership came up at the state annual meeting, where they vote on your membership as far as being an associate member of the rescue squad organization, they recommended against allowing us to be allowed in as an associate member. They did the same for the county. And, and so we didn't get in. And I was, I was pretty upset about that. I won't kid with you. Of course, I didn't know all this other drama was going on behind the scenes. You know, I learned a lot during this investigation into how we got pulled into that. But nevertheless, what they have done is going to cost us money. And because we're not, you know, we'll still get the training, you know? And to me, that was kind of the silliness of the whole maneuver. The only thing they accomplished by fighting us being an associate member is they didn't lock us out of being able to go to the training. They just knocked us out of the discount. We can still go get the training. Anybody can. Anybody can go get the training. But you have to pay a higher price if you're not a member or an associate member. And so I, you know, I told them plain, look, you know, if this costs the city Newport money, then my recommendation is going to be that that money come out of your pocket, not mine. Because we give them $12,000 a year, free money. And if, and again, it may not, because I think I've got it smoothed over, but they don't know if they can, it may be July of next year before they can vote on us again as far as being associate members. But I still, even though I get where they're coming from, I still don't appreciate what happened to us. And, you know, I kind of, I feel, even though they felt like, for whatever reason, the conclusion they came to that we were a part of this behind the scenes dealing that's trying to get, allegedly trying to get rid of them, they should have come, I felt like they should have come and asked about it, you know? Are you guys doing this or whatever? Instead of just taking it, you know, and running with it. But anyway, I told them that until this was resolved, and they said they'll try to work with us to resolve it. But until this is resolved, if it costs us money, it is going to be my recommendation that it come out of their donation. Because they shouldn't have done that just to cost us money. And that's the only thing it accomplished. By, you know, working against us being an associate member, it just makes us have to pay a higher price for the training. We can still get it. We just have to pay more for it. And I think they should suffer that loss and not us. But maybe we can fix it. I told them, you know, after we kind of went back and forth on why they thought what they thought, you know, I said, okay, you know, we've worked, we've worked through all this, so how do we fix it? And they said they would try to fix it, but they may not be able to fix it till July. So I know some of you had heard about it, had called and asked me about it, what's going on. And, and I explained it kind of like here in a nutshell. But now, I had almost an hour and a half meeting with the emergency management director and almost a two-hour meeting with the representatives of the rescue squad. And that was the leadership of the rescue squad. And I, there is a problem going on between the rescue squad and emergency management. There are hard feelings there on both sides. That, it's like I told them, that is nothing to me, you know? All I'm responsible for are the people in the city Newport and the employees of the city Newport. And we're committed to doing the best job we can do for the, for the people that we serve and try to protect. And so I want my people to be as trained as possible to be able to perform the duties necessary to protect the people in this town. And we're going to do that. And, you know, with or without the support of whoever, I don't care who it is. And, but I am not going to get caught up into the politics of what, whatever is going on between the rescue squad and the county. That's their problem, not our problem. Jeremy and I had a nice long meeting yesterday morning. He, you know, I wish he could have been here last week to, to meet with the rescue squad when I did, but his mother was having surgery and he had to be out of town. And I get that and respect that. But I went over it in detail with him yesterday. And, you know, we, we're going to do whatever we can to try to fix this on our end. But between, like I say, the county and them, that's, that's their deal. I just, I do not want to be caught up into it. And I don't know, you know, they, the stories they told, I'm not going to get into any of that. It's, you know, but they, they ran parallel quite a bit as far as what the emergency management director said and what the rescue squad representative said. They, they pretty much agreed on, on some of the problems that had happened. It was just different perspectives and takes on it. So, you know, my opinion is they need to work out their differences, too. But I've got enough to worry about trying to run the city. I sure not going to get into the problems of the county. They can run their own problems. But, you know, I make it very clear to anybody, and I know that you all, the times that I've spoken to you guys about this a little bit, some of you, I mean, nobody in the city Newport wants to do anything to hurt the rescue squad. I mean, we, we have always been fully committed to the rescue squad. They serve a valuable service to this community. They, it's a volunteer organization. It doesn't get a dime for what they do. They put in a lot of hours. And my whole life, I've supported the rescue squad. My family supported, my member Jay Briggs coming, sitting on the porch and talking to my dad when I was a kid, sitting in the swing, listening to him. And so I've always known who and what the rescue squad was, and I've always supported them. And I know everybody, all you all do, and the city government does. And so I do not, I do not want that to happen again to where they get it in their mind that somehow we're against them, because we are not. But they were convinced that we were. And I kind of got some of what he said, but I just wish that they had, had come to one of you guys, or to me, or to the mayor, or somebody, and said, hey, why, you know, are you guys all of a sudden against us for some reason? I wish they had pursued that a little bit, instead of just taking it at face value for whatever reason that they come to the conclusion of it. Because they certainly didn't hear it from anybody that was connected to the city. It was strictly a conclusion that they came to just based on observations that they had made. And I thought that was a little unfair. And they admitted that they probably should have come and talked to somebody to try to find out more, instead of just kind of jumping to that conclusion. And so, and that's why I say that I think I've got it about ironed out. But I don't know that, that it can be fixed until next year from the money standpoint. That's, that's, I mean, that's it in a nutshell. I can tell you, like I say, I could go on for another hour as far as telling you what this side said is the reason they're mad, and what this side said that this side did to them. I got, you know, I got that whole nine yards. And I'm not going to share that here. That's, you know, that's, that's all drama and soap opera as far as I'm concerned.
I don't think any of the council members were. I wasn't when they talked to me. I had no idea what they were talking about anyway.
Well, I had no clue any of this was going on either until, until they fought us, you know? I mean, it blindsided us, you know, when, when Jeremy came to me about a week and a half ago and said that, you know, that they're, they're against us joining the rescue squad as an associate member. And we, we sent somebody to talk to them to find out was that true, that is a firefighter that's also a member of the rescue squad. We asked him what's going on, and he said, let me talk to the leadership. And the feedback we got was is they had a problem with the county, but not with us. But then when we, so we thought it was, it was just all a misunderstanding. And then when it come up down there for a vote, they got up and fought against it. And obviously, it wasn't just about them and the county. It was us, too. And when I asked the leadership about that, they said that was a communication breakdown by that, that member that was to go between, between the chief and the rescue squad. That what they said didn't get conveyed to the chief clearly. That, so, you know, that I don't know. I can't answer to. But we did, when we found out about it, we did reach out to them to find out, is this true? Do you think this? And then the answer we got back was, well, basically, no, our problem's with, with the county. And, but they say that wasn't exactly what they told him, that he, that what he relayed to us was not what they told him. So it was a communication breakdown, no doubt, on both sides. But I just wanted to bring you up to speed on it. Because when I was talking to the vice mayor about it, just like he said, that one of them, they had talked to him a little bit about the, the problem they were having with the county, and he didn't even know what they were talking about. And I, and I didn't know anything about none of this stuff till, till we found out that they were against us getting an associate membership. But we're working on it, just so if you, if you do hear more about it. That's it in a nutshell, without, like I say, getting into the details of why this one's mad at that one, and what this one said about that one, and so on.
And our annual donation has not gone out yet, correct?
That's correct. And so, Chief, is there anything you want to add to that? Yeah, you know.
That's a question I'll answer if I think. But like I said, it's not anything, you know, I just saw a need. I see my guys on the Riverline, get picked out of the car, and I want to provide them the training to benefit the citizens and protect, protect the county.
Absolutely.
On this age and vast communication, the way they live, and I mean, it's, it's not too much to think somebody's, just simply pick up the phone and call somebody.
Right. And they admitted that they probably should have done that. They admitted that, you know, that they probably should have checked with me or the mayor or somebody, not just took it at face value and went with it.
I don't think we should lay it, put our citizens at risk because of clerical error. Go ahead and proceed with that.
Well, we're going to do, we're going to do, that's, that's what I was saying. You know, we're going to do the training. And if it costs us more money as a result, I think it needs to come out of their, their money. And I told them that. And they said, well, we'd heard you was, you was going to cut out all our money. And I said, no, that was never going to be my recommendation. And that, once again, there you go with misinformation. I never said that once. What I said was that it'd be my recommendation that it not cost us money, it cost them money. Because this was all they're doing. And so it should come out of their donation, any monies that it cost us, that it would not have cost us had they not done what they did. Okay, enough about that. I'm not sure if, I may be the only one who has this. Did y'all get a copy of the per diem policy, the travel policy per diem? Okay, it's, I'm the only one who has it. The, y'all are aware of the travel policy. You all, when you got a copy of the personnel policy, it's included in it. And you're aware of how the per diem works. And the per diem being the, the monies that the city provides to reimburse or pay for meals when you're traveling. And we got to talking about it, Tina and I. And I told her that I would like to at least look at maybe increasing that per diem. We, it's pretty much been where it is now, I think, for about 10, maybe 12 years. And we know what the inflation is doing right now as far as meals go. If you've not ate out lately, you, you need to for a little sticker shock. But, and, and when you take into effect, you know, eight, 10, 12 years worth of inflation, too. But I would like with, and all I need is just a head nod. We don't need a vote or anything. But if you all are in agreement with that, I would like to research that and possibly come back with a new recommendation as far as updating the per diem for meals. Because I, you know, I don't want, anybody that has to go for training or a meeting that's stuck out of town for the day or overnight, I don't want them to have to go eat three Crystal Burgers to, as far as their meal goes. I mean, you should be able to go to the, to the restaurant at the hotel you're staying at and eat a decent meal. Now, I don't mean you got to get the most expensive thing on the menu, but, but you should be able to eat a decent meal. And $10 or $12.
$60 steak is out of the question?
Yeah, yeah. That's on you if you want, if you want to do that, that's on you, buddy. But, but yeah, we just want to try to be, take a common sense approach to it. And, you know, when common sense tells you that you can't buy just a standard, regular meal for this price anymore, then it's time to look it up in that a little bit. And we're, we're certainly not talking about making it to where it's living as, as my dad used to say, high on the hog. It's just, just being able to, to just eat a, a regular meal that would be a reasonable meal that anybody would eat. And so we'd like, it's our intent to research that a little bit, if y'all don't have a problem with it, and, and come back with a recommendation maybe next month on increasing that a little bit. It won't be a big jump, but just enough to make it to where it covers what it would cost to eat, you know? And like I say, not have to be on a bread and water regimen. I mean, I know some, I could stand to be, to cut back a little bit, but we don't want to, we just don't want it to be punitive to people to go on a, on a trip that we've asked them to go on and then make them pay to eat, you know?
Also looking at, in addition to that, increasing the gas rate?
If, we're going, well, yeah, we would evaluate it all as far as looking at what the state's doing, what the federal rate, and that's, to see how we compare with those, yeah. Okay. The only other thing I have, we're going to have another litter pickup on Saturday, August the 14th. And so the first two, it went really, went really well. We did have a little drop off in the second one as far as participation with our volunteers. So we'll see. I knew, I figured when the heat kicked in in the dog days that people wouldn't be as gungho about being out on the side of the road picking up trash. So we still did pretty good last time, and we'll see how it goes this time. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda then is appointment of board commissions and committees, which we have none. And our reports from committees, members of council, and other officers, Tatter Preservation Alliance. Gary not in. Do you have anything to report?
No more, Mayor.
Colleen, do you have anything to report?
Anything.
Okay. I didn't want to leave you out this time.
Mayor, I might, I'll give you just a little bit.
Okay.
Gary and I met today and discussed, and also met with Tina. And we are going to move, start, begin to move forward with the Welcome Center. The renovations to the Welcome Center, the awning and the window that needs to be replaced. And so within the next month, we hope to be moving forward with the Welcome Center. So that, that would be a development within the building.
Great. All right, our next item then is old, old business, which we have none. We'll move on to new business. And item A is discussion of audit for fiscal year 2019-20. Auditors Brown, Jake, and McDaniel, D.C.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank McDaniel, as you may know, and this is Haley Slagley. Haley has been functioning as the in-charge manager on your all's audit engagement. I will happily report that as of July 1st, Haley became a partner in our firm. And so we congratulate her on that. And she will be playing even a bigger role on your all's engagement going forward.
Congratulations, Hank.
She's homegrown, girl.
So you have the audit report here, and of course, it is in 2020, so we're a year removed from these numbers. And, but we will cover the highlights, and I'll do it as quickly as possible. If you turn to the table of contents, you know, your reporting are quite lengthy. It does include the consolidated government of the city of Newport. There's page one through three includes a transmittal letter from your management, along with the principal officials of the city. That includes both the city and the school system and the utility board, because they are all combined in this report. The independent audit report follows on page four through six. I'll talk about that in just a moment. There is a required supplementary information management discussion and analysis. It's fairly lengthy, page seven through 21. That will give you a highlight without going through the details of most of the results of the financial statements themselves on a comparative basis. They are, some of the numbers are condensed form, but they are comparative in nature. You can kind see the results of this year versus last year, and some of the explanations as to the changes. The basic statements follow, and of course, governmental accounting standards requires a two-fold statement. We do a consolidated statement that's almost on an accrual basis, similar to what a business would be, where all assets and liabilities are included in the balance sheet, and all of the activities related to both capital assets and debt payments are included, along with other long-term liabilities, in the liability section of that balance sheet and the income statement. That's one set of statements. Then we have the normal governmental fund statements. Those would be similar to what you adopt when you look at your budgetary method, where it's more driven almost by cash basis and it's converted at the end of the year to an accrual basis for receivables like property taxes, state shared revenues, and certain liabilities that are going to be paid within 60 days from the funds that you have. And of course, all of the entities are included here. The city, the utilities, and most of the city government and the school system are included in the governmental funds, and the related balance sheets and changes in fund balance. And there's reconciliations that bridge these statements. So, and then we go on, on the second page of the table of contents, and there's a lot of required information there that's supplementary in nature. Most of these address pension plans and ratio analysis that will end up being 10 years long, so you can see trend analysis related to participating. long, so you can see trend analysis related to participation in pension plans. And of course, a lot of those plans are in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. There's several plans at schools for teachers and non-teachers. And then, of course, there's post-deployment benefits, other than pension plans, referred to as OPEB. Those would be like health insurance or other benefits supplied or paid for for retirees after they leave employment, up until possibly age sixty-five, or in some cases, some plans are longer than that. But here in the city, I think most of them are confined to that unless they're school teachers. The other supplementary information is mostly required by the comptroller here in Tennessee. That's on pages one-ten through one-thirty-one. And then there's some other statistical information on page one-thirty-two through one-thirty-five. Again, most of those are required by the state. And then there's two reports at the end from the independent auditor, us, about internal control and compliance at the financial statement level. And then finally, there's another report that outlines our testing related to single audit or uniform guidance requirements. When the city or the schools receive combined federal funding of more than $750,000. And so, you all were required to have testing of certain programs, and that is included on page one-thirty-eight through one-forty-one. And that pretty much covers what's in here. I'm not going to go through all of the details, obviously, because we don't have time. But on page four, our audit report, the first page into the top of the second page, page five, is a standard audit report, and it is a unqualified or unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, on governmental activities of the city. The business-type activities are audited by other auditors. That includes all the departments of the utility board. So we place any reliance related to those reports on their report, which was a clean report. And then, also, we cover the, not only the government-wide governmental statements, but also the governmental fund statement. And we give a clean opinion on all of those. The other information here is about the other required information and the federal assistance schedule, saying that in relation to the financial statements, they're fairly stated. So we get positive assurance about those schedules. And then finally, the introductory section and the other statistical section's not been audited by us, and we do not give an opinion or any form of assurance on that. And the last item on page six is telling the reader that we did perform and issue other auditors' reports on internal control and compliance, and they should read those in conjunction with the audit report at full understanding of our findings. So that pretty much covers that. The MDA follows, I'm not going to talk about that much, and to be honest with you, on page twenty-three, twenty-two, the balance sheet on entity-wide level is there, and it's kind of in small print, but I don't think that's written equal to you, other than knowing that you have positive fund balances in the governmental activities and, of course, the business-type activities. And on page thirty-four is an entity-wide statement of fund activities. And again, you can see that this is turned the other way on page twenty-four. And if you look in the very first column, this is the combined governmental activities of the city and the schools, and you had a positive change in net position of $3,350,000 for the year. The fund balance sheet follows on page twenty-five. Again, this eliminates a lot of long-term assets and long-term debt related to your operations. This is listed by your funds. You have a general fund and the general purpose school fund. They require major display, because they make up a larger percentage, and it is measured on a percentage basis of total assets and revenues. And the other funds can be displayed in the non-major governmental fund, so it's a combination of a lot of different funds in that column. But overall, the general fund had assets of thirteen million, almost thirteen million and a half, and had total liabilities over $455,000. And then finally, if you turn the page, page twenty-six, you will see that the total equity and fund balance of the general fund was slightly less than nine million dollars. And the general purpose school fund had a fund balance of around $2,808,000. The other funds had fund balances of about $1,658,000, for a total of a city of $13,361,781, compared to last year being a little over $1.5 million. So, you did have equity growth this year. That's demonstrated on page twenty-eight. This is a sort of condensed look at the general fund and the general purpose school fund and the other funds. Total revenues of the general fund were $11,234,882, and expenditures were $10,206,006. You had revenues exceeding expenditures of about a million, a little over a million dollars. You had transfers out to other funds in the city, related to capital outlays and also schools. And then you had, in lieu of tax collected from your utilities, of a million 524,000. And so, the total net change for the year in the general fund is $813,559,000, a healthy positive amount. And the schools were a little over $400,000 change. There are statements that follow that bridge the gap there, but I think that's the most important thing that you all probably will look at. There are statements in here that actually compare the general fund and the general purpose school fund by line item expenditures, but I'm not going to go into detail on that, unless someone has a question about it. Finally, on page forty-nine, the notes follow, and the notes for your all's statement disclosures, both of them, all which are required by governmental accounting standards, are quite lengthy, to say the least. They start on page forty-nine, and they go all the way through page ninety-nine. So fifty pages of notes. There's details in there about most, anything you want to read about in the financial statements, as far as assets and liabilities, and restrictions on certain equities or fund balance. So, you know, you can thumb through there, and anything of interest to you, you could probably find it in these note disclosures. And then finally, as I told you earlier, there's a lot of ratios in here on pensions and OPEBs. Those follow the notes. And then, on page one-ten, is a statement of federal and state awards. This outlines the expenditures on various programs of the city for federal and state grants, and overall, the total federal awards for the year. And this includes the city and the schools only, with a million 54893. We chose programs that would get us over the threshold testing for single audit purposes. There is a defined criteria for those selections, and we followed that in testing the programs that we chose. There were state awards that also followed. A lot of those included school funding, and you can see that was over $4 million. And then the total state, federal state awards were almost $5,808,000 in total on page one-eleven. The other information follows, and there's a lot of data in here that includes everything from debt amortizations to the utilities rate structure and various other items that you can take a look at. The last thing I'll point out is on page one-thirty-six, this is the other independent auditors' reports. The first one is at the financial statement and compliance level. We're required, under governmental audit standards, to issue this report, and definitions are there. It's, we were not required to audit internal control, but we are required to point out any deficiencies that we think are significant or material in nature to the financial statements. And this letter is a clean letter and does not have any findings, so I congratulate your management and the city on this accomplishment. Then, on page one-thirty-eight, is the report on the federal programs that we audited. Again, we are required to give positive assurance here related to those programs, and it describes what we audited and the auditor's responsibility. We did exclude the audit of the Newport Electric Broadband System and the Newport Water and Sewer System from our federal programs. They issued their own audit related to federal assistance. But this letter is also a clean letter on the programs that we tested, and it concludes on page one-thirty-nine with the opinion on each federal program we tested along with compliance. So we're going to go through that program. And then it requires that we issue sort of a summary of our results on page one-forty. Those results are outlined, and you can see at the bottom, under item G on one-forty, that we audited the Department of Agricultural National School Breakfast Program and the Section Four and Eleven Lunch Program at the school to meet our threshold for testing for single audit purposes. You all were judged to be a low-risk auditee. You did not have findings in the prior year, and you met the thresholds without having findings and without having findings in federal programs to reach a low-risk auditee threshold, which is great. Means we got to do less testing. Instead of doing forty percent of your federal dollars, we only have to do twenty percent. So, that's great. And then finally, we show on page one-forty-one, under items two and three, that we had no findings on the financial statement level, internal control report, or the federal awards opinion. And then we are required to tell the comptroller that there was no findings in the prior year. If you had findings in the prior year, they won't know how you're addressing those findings. This is several years in a row that you've been able to accomplish a clean report all the way through.
I want to thank James and Tina for working hard on this book, and y'all have done a real good job, and that means you all did. Can be a thank you all for what you do.
Haley, may I have a few words about testing and cooperation?
Just, I'm glad that Frank mentioned the low-risk audit status. That's, you know, certainly something to be proud of, because we have, you know, audited quite a few amount of federal dollars in the past. So being able to reduce that to low-risk audit is quite something. And just thank Tina and James and their staff. They are great to work with and always ready for us, and we just really, really appreciate that. It really makes everything go very, very smooth. And thank you all for the detailed review of the audit report. They always review and have some good questions, and everyone's just great to work with.
Thank you all.
So thank you very much.
Good boy.
Considering the Mass Coach and Bobby and I came into it in 2015, we've come our way.
I guess the only thing I could add is we apologize for the lateness or the tardiness of getting the information to you from Newport Utilities. I'm sure that was a little bit problematic for you. The other side of that is, I'm not sure that it's going to be any better this year. But we will do our best to push them to make sure they get their information into us on time, but we just, there's a lot of uncertainty still.
Right. We know the circumstances, and we appreciate your efforts.
One thing I'll say is, firstly, thank you for the praise, and thanks to Frank also. But I can't take much thunder for it. Tina does all the heavy lifting. I just back her up. I'm her backup. But she does a phenomenal job. She's a stickler for detail, and she has great command of our finances, as any of you that have dealt with her well know. And so, she deserves the lion's share of the praise, not me, but I just always try to have her back to make sure she gets what she needs.
He does, and I do appreciate that, but honestly, I can't take all that credit. It is a group effort, and I do want to make sure to thank the staff here and all the departments, because it's a year-long process. And I want to mention especially Frank and Haley this year. It has been tough. Like you mentioned, it was a little later, and I know there's a lot of back-and-forth communication, and that was a stressful time for everybody, trying to get everything done at that timeframe. So I do appreciate, that's a massive book that they worked on. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
I do want to thank the city, mayor, and board for providing the brief upon the death of my dad, Task of Leaks. I know that he worked with many of you all over the years, and he'll certainly be missed, but I appreciate you all thinking of us, and thank you for all the prayers, condolences, phone calls, and texts that we received.
All right, our next item on the agenda, then, is, item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021-07, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title Nine, Peddlers, Civisters, et cetera, adding Chapter Ten, Yard Sale slash Garage Sales.
Okay, this ordinance is pretty bare bones. It's not very restrictive. It basically says that you can have yard sales on the weekend, and you can't do it two weekends in a row. It's not my intent to have grant patrol like Batman looking for yard sales that happen two weeks in a row, and I do not want the police having to look for them either. If someone calls and complains, then we will reference the dispatch sheet. What's that thing called? Yeah, we will reference that and see if there were for yard sale issues, and then if we find that someone hasn't registered with us, then we will issue them into city court. Pretty simple. It's not an oppressive ordinance, we don't feel like.
We have, and to expand on that a little bit, we have, as well as I know some of you have, received complaints about perpetual yard sales at certain locations. And this will give us tools to deal with that. You know, it can be disruptive to the neighbors, people parking in their yards, and, you know, kind of chaos going on, and when it goes on four or five days a week, and just week after week after week, I can see where neighbors get frustrated with it. And we really didn't have a way to regulate that. And so, this gives us a means, like, just to back up what Gary said, we are not going to be out here taking notes on who's having a yard sale and who's not. This is strictly going to be a thing that if somebody in the neighborhood complains about it, then we will look into it. And this gives us a way to deal with it, if we determine that it is creating a nuisance in the neighborhood.
And it's just covered, the people kind of pop up on street corners and side of roads and stuff like that?
Well, this specific portion of it does not. This is more, this is, what we're adding is just a way to regulate yard and garage sales on this. But now, those kinds of things come under this, as far as peddlers go. The P, these pop-ups on the side of the road are considered peddlers. It's not considered a yard sale or a garage sale. It'd be peddlers. And they are supposed, you know, there are ways where they're supposed to get a peddler's license. We have some folks that set up on their own property and sell homegrown tomatoes for a few days or something like that. We don't necessarily consider them a peddler. That's correct, isn't it?
Correct.
Because we have, we have one family that is doing that. They've sold corn, they've sold tomatoes, they've sold several different things they've grown in their garden just as a supplemental, and they've set up on their own property. So that, they're not really, it's not like somebody that just pulled to the side of the road and whooped a tarp up on the back of the truck, started selling corn. So- on the back of the truck, started selling corn. So but that stuff is addressed in here. And so we, there's different, there's different ways of addressing it. It just depends on the circumstance, on how they're set up and what they're selling. And a lot of that comes down to whether or not they're selling stuff they actually grew theirself, or are they buying and reselling. That changes the dynamic of it, too. Because that's, you know, we get into that a little bit with the farmer's market. You know, that's, it's supposed to be homegrown stuff. And then, you know, if somebody starts selling oranges, you know, you know, oranges weren't growed up on English Mountains somewhere. So but this, this, you know, I kind of got sidetracked a little bit. But this portion is just a new portion. It does not address peddlers. It doesn't change the law regarding peddlers. It's just a way to regulate yard sales that we did not have. Because they were basically unregulated.
So with this, an individual who wanted to have a yard sale would be required to get a permit?
Yes, if they were planning on doing it again the next weekend, yes. And right now, you'd just have to come into City Hall and register with a form. I'm trying to make something really easy where if you had, were having one and didn't sign up, you could just go online and hit that. And then it'll record the address. So then we'll have record of it in case they try to do it next weekend. But right now, and I don't, I don't know how much traffic we get on this. But like Mr. Fincham said, it, you have a lot of people that are upset when something like that happens. So and instead of just saying, can't do nothing about it, now we can do something about it.
So if someone just decides, okay, I've got too much junk in my basement. I'm going to throw it out in the front yard and have a sale. They don't realize they're supposed to get a permit?
They will not for a while.
We're not going to give them a ticket?
Yeah, there will be a grace period on this for certain. And honestly, it probably only, there's probably only a handful of people that would abuse something like this.
Yeah, we know where that is.
Can you guess where they might live?
Yeah.
Would there be a fee required?
I have not written one in, but I saw other, I read dozens of them. And some of them did, some of them didn't.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't charge somebody a fee to have a yard sale. No.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we need a motion then to?
Our motion to approve ordinance number 2021-07 is written.
Second.
All right. Yeah, we have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded. We'll need a roll call to approve.
Alderman Mike Hansen?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Last Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition. Next item is discussion of authorizing the City of Newport to adopt a requested property into the City of Newport.
Annexation is a 27 step process I've learned recently. It's not as easy as I'd hoped. But hopefully, some of the steps aren't as hard as they could be since the property owner is willing to, is asking to be annexed. All I need tonight, in front of you, you have the resolution for the plan of service, which has to first go to the planning commission. But before that, you have to vote for me to move forward. Is that, that's how you understood it, right? Okay. So you just need to, if you're good with plan of service for this address, you vote for me to carry forward. And then I'll bring it in front of the planning commission. And then it'll come back to actually approve in a month.
Where is that piece of property, Gary?
It's out next to the woodso, the old woodso, that new building that's gone up. That's where the, yeah.
Okay. You have a copy of the resolution in your, in your packet?
Question, Gary, are we voting on the resolution?
Just, just for me to continue forward, you're, you're happy?
There is a resolution though.
Correct. And it has to first be approved by the planning commission, then come back before you to be actually voted on. I just need a vote of confidence, I guess, to move forward with the plan of service.
Yeah, if you'll notice, there's no, there's no number on it. It's at the top. If you look, it is not numbered yet. But we will do that when it actually comes back. You know, Gary has been frustrated with it. And it is, you know, this is all part of this new thing they come up with when they changed all the annexation laws some years back. And they, you know, they've made it so restrictive on annexing, even when people beg to be annexed, which is rare. But these folks are, they really want to be annexed. And so, and they need to be for their business sake.
I make a motion to give you whatever you need to move forward.
Thank you.
I'll second that vote.
Thank you, Coach.
All in favor, shake your flag to him. Motion carries without opposition, I guess. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Storm Drain Contract Amendment. Community Development Director Gary Carver, he's busy today.
Yeah, it's been a month. This is the last change order. This should be the last change order. This is the final pain from everything that, the first thing that, it was a year ago next month, whenever Randy came out from the engineering firm to, we talked about the potential fees with the railroad. We negotiated with them, and that was the bare bones that we could get, the run over that's there in the change order. And at the time, I think they were, they had put in their budget 60 grand. So even though it was more than we wanted, it still came out a lot less than it could have been. And the other change is the, oh, removal of the tank. Yeah. No, wait, what is the other? I'm sorry.
Railroad inspection and?
Yeah, the dirt, the dirt.
The dirt, yeah. Yeah. Because we just had the money to, it was the additional dirt that was removed because of the contaminated ground. Yeah, that's it. And then that'll, that will end the project finally.
Please, board's pleasure.
Well, just right quick, this thing is about that thick.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So if you all wished, we did not include it in your packet because it was so thick. I had Gary just to put down this cover sheet that just summarized it. But if any of you would like to review the entire document, we can make that available.
Yeah, it's all this, yeah, all the supporting documents. Sorry, I forgot that. It's all the supporting documentation that goes with each of the two.
But basically, I mean, it's just something we're going to have to pay. You know, we, we ran in, unfortunately, we ran into this tank that was in there. And we, we had to remove it. And when the environmental study said we had to move all this dirt, we had to move it. So our hands were tied. This was not anything that we had a choice in. We had to do it. And here's what it cost us.
All right. You've heard the presentation. The, what's the board's pleasure in terms of the total amount of contract amendment appears to be $48,150.75. We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the contract amendment in the amount of $48,150.75. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansen?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Last Mayor Mike Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition. Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number 2021-04, authorizing the City of Newport to participate in the Public Entity Partners Safety Grant.
This is the grant that we apply for each and every year. It helps us to pay for safety equipment such as boots and gloves and masks now and so on. It's a, it's a 50% match. They pay half on everything that we pay. I think now it's up, it's like $4,000. And we've been getting this grant since about 94. And it's, it's an annual thing. And we reapply for it every year. And we get it and we spend it every year. So it just helps us to equip our people. And it puts $2,000 into the kitty to help buy safety equipment. But we have to, we have to come to you guys every year and request the approval to apply every year. And we'll be back next year if nothing goes sideways.
So this authorization is just to apply for the grant?
Yes, sir.
Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
We have just $10. Roll call.
I think we just need a vote, a motion and a vote.
I make a motion to apply for this grant.
We have a motion on the board then to, to apply for the Public Entity Partners Safety Grant. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye. And any nays like sign.
And I wish they would go up on that. It's been that amount for almost 30 years. So they could go up, like we were talking earlier, inflation's kind of eat that up. I wish they'd look at maybe going up a little bit on it.
Motion carries without opposition. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the request from the Cock County Partnership for a special events concert. Is that Lynn or is that Lucas?
I won't get out of and let her talk. So we're looking at putting on a fall concert tentatively for September 18. I've talked with most of you about this at this point. Or Lynn has one or the other. This is just authorizing us to have a special permit to do that. And along with some vendors that will come in there as well. We've had some trial runs with stuff like this with a gala and other activities in the past. And I think this is, this is an opportunity to further that, to make sure we've got some bigger, better events going forward. Right now, we're looking at a sponsorship opportunity that's pending right now, hopefully to cover all the cost of the entertainment and the lights and equipment and that kind of stuff. So we don't, still got some planning left to do. But this is preemptive in getting that, that approval done. James, what do, do you want to add anything else to that?
You all are very familiar with the Rhythm on the River Concert Series we've done for the past five or six years. And of course, we had a little bit of a slow year last year due to COVID. We made a really good, and I know a lot of you came by at least one concert. We had a really good rebound year this year. And our, our attendance was back up close to where it was pre pandemic this year. It wasn't quite as high as it was the year prior to the pandemic. But it was really close, especially towards the end. We had some really good bands. One of the things that have come up every year that we've done the concerts, we've always did them on a Thursday. And so lots of folks have asked, you know, is there any way you could have one of these on the weekend, you know, instead of a, not a school night, but a work night? And so, you know, we, we've batted at back and forth. And the partnership came to me with the idea of having a, trying that. When it cools down a little bit in September, having a Saturday concert event with multiple bands that would start earlier in the day and, and see how that would go. And I, you know, and I was intrigued by it. And I, I thought it was a good idea to try and see where it might go. And, you know, may, and try to maybe have some food trucks come in as far as the food service goes. And Kiwanis had said, I mentioned it to them, and they, they weren't real keen on wanting to do it. And I think they kind of got wore down with the five concerts. And so they, they didn't really want to do the, the all day event on a Saturday. But I think the food trucks would be a great alternative as far as giving people a variety of choice. But, you know, I, I think it would be a good thing to try and just to see how it goes. It would, we've had, for those of you that came or if talking to people that have came, I've been very pleased with the feedback that I have gotten from the folks that have come to the concerts as far as every year, I have people say, well, I didn't realize this was back here. Oh, this is really, this river walk is really nice. I'm going to be back. I, you know, how far does this go? And how far is it going to go? And they really seem to enjoy it. And that was one of the reasons that we agreed to do the concerts to begin with, was to bring people back here and show them this facility that we have along the river. And it's been an eye opener to a lot of people that it's back there, even though we've advertised it very well over the years and done everything we could do to promote it. But I think that the Rhythm on the River Concert Series has done more to promote the River Walk than anything that we've ever done, undoubtedly. And I am curious to see how many people will, will come to this if you, if you all approve it and it gets to happen. I'm very interested in seeing how that, that goes. And so I, I told them that I would support it. If, if they decided they wanted to do it, that I would support it. And I do support it. And I think we should try it and see how it goes. And, you know, he's already getting worried about, can we handle this many people? I hope that gets to be a problem. But we'll see. And I do think that possibly, you know, you'd think theoretically that having three bands, they, that would, because a lot of the people that come are fans of them, that follow them and come to where they are. And just by the sheer number of having three, that's going to triple the, the followers as far as that goes. And hopefully, they would come, you know, it's a free event. You come and stay all day for a free, free music festival, basically. So I would recommend it. And, and we'll see. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, or we have problems, then we'll learn from it. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see how it plays out.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the request for a fall, Rhythm on the River Fall Kickoff. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Here none. Motion carries without opposition.
Thank you, sir.
Item G is consideration of sale of City of Newport property 119 North Wood Lawn.
Okay. We have been given an offer for 119 North Wood Lawn, which is in the packet. The elevator pitch on that is $20,000 by the gentleman listed on the paper. He's put a timeline for his estimated, the amount of time estimated to get the building open. We have also received an offer on that building, which is less. But also, the, the second offer includes the animal control building, which they will rent back to the city for a dollar until we can get out of there into new facility and get that out of downtown. And the, oh, and we've also been told that they will repair the roof on that building, which would be about $15,000. So the offer on the two buildings is $1 each. Their plan is to do mixed retail and just commercial development in the two buildings, which would produce sales tax revenue, which the offer on the table for 20,000 would not because their plan is to use it for storage and office space and some residential. Have I missed anything that's on the sheet? The only new information that isn't on there is the roof from the interested second party.
And that was relayed to me. They called me yesterday. And of course, you know, we, they have requested that we only refer to them as the investor or the interest, you know, in vague terms. That is by their request. We're not trying to be mysterious. That is because they are looking at different, different ideas about what they wanted, that they're wanting to do down there. And they wish to remain anonymous at this point in time. I think all of you all are aware of who they are. But I don't want to look like we're not wanting to be transparent. We, we don't like doing business this way. But sometimes people that are looking at trying to do a business venture would prefer that, that the least amount be disclosed about it as can be until they make their own disclosure about it and can make a big splash with it.
In the long run, this will be a lot better deal for getting everything cleaned up, back on the tax base.
If, yeah, if, if, if they'll do everything. If, yeah, if, if, if they'll do everything they say they're going to do, it'll be fantastic.
Yeah, you, you could...
We currently don't have that on...
Correct. They're both, they're both publicly owned. And depending on what goes in, if, if they fulfill all their obligations to, and again, there's no contract from the other one. You, you could vote on to sell it for, to the one gentleman for $20,000 tonight or table it, I guess, and, and, and give me other directions to how you want, what other information you would want from the, from the other.
Table it and then do we get more information?
That, that would be my recommendation. Alderman Hansel suggested that to me earlier. And I, I told him I thought that was probably, and I want to try to steal, I'm going to make sure he gets the credit for it. It was his idea. But he, he mentioned to me, that to me earlier. And I told him I thought that that might be the best way to go right now that we can get something on paper that, that is, is a little bit more ironclad than just a, a handshake and a, and a wink.
Do we have something from this anonymous donor that says they're going to put this in writing or?
That, well, yeah, you would have to before we could write, yeah. And, and just for, because I have knowledge, they've done things like this before in, to get a publicly owned building that was rundown and transformed it back into something that was then bringing people in and they were spending money. So they've done it before. This isn't a, something that, place that's never happened before in America.
And it was for a dollar too.
Yeah.
Because when I first learned that, I thought...
You decide to sell it to, all that has to be made public. So it wouldn't be I come in here next month with the same, the mysterious, you know what I mean? So, or, or whenever, whatever timeline you want to put on it.
Well, I think we all understand the need of objectuality. But still, yeah, we're the ones that are responsible.
Yes, certainly.
When we refer to people's day and the entity, that makes sense.
I know. It's stuff that I, stuff we can't really do. It's, yeah, correct. It's more his thing to have the codename projects and things. And so, and since you're, and normally he would handle something like this, but since it's, it's our property, then we've got to make the decision. Did you say something a second ago?
I was going to say I'd, I'd had to take the time to make a letter, develop an agreement letter against an application or to use that.
Okay.
Only personally, I want the best use of the property to be selected.
I, I know. It's, it's a tough spot to put you guys in and I wouldn't do it. But it's, if, if we get an opportunity, even if it, even if you just end up, because the other guy's got a decent proposal, he'll have it open in a couple of weeks, a couple of months, it looks like. And then it's back on the tax roll. It's got a new roof. It's been rehabbed a little bit. But long-term, the potential of the second offer gives you better economic return. Just on paper. Again, we have no commitments on monetary investment or anything like that.
And if he puts, if they, if they put the roof on the, the, the animal control building, we're getting, we're going to have to do it this year. And that'll about make it a wash as far as what we were getting for the other property versus what we'll be saving on us not paying for the roof. About makes it a wash. It could be as, we haven't got a hard number on it, but it'll be in the $15,000 to $20,000 range to put a roof on it. So that would make it a financial wash as far as the money goes. That we would, you know, instead of taking the $20,000 that we get from the, the one offer and spending it on the other building and ending up with a zero balance, we would not get the $20,000, but we'd get the roof done. And again, we're at a zero balance. So it's...
And no taxpayer expense.
Yes. So either way, the money will end up in the roof, if either way you want to look at it.
So we can, we need a motion to table this?
No. I would think based on the parliamentary procedures that it would take to get it off the table, I just recommend we take no action tonight and go forward next month.
Any guidance on what you'd like to see as far as, I would, I'm assuming something on paper, but is that more of what would make you guys feel comfortable?
Something. You know what we need. We've already...
Some details.
Yeah, okay.
A verbal contract's good.
Yeah. So it's, it's okay for Mr. Fincham and Ms. Tina and Terry and myself to kind of work with the, the other investor and kind of come up with what we think the best plan of action would be, I suppose. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 10 is, excuse me, bids, purchase and expenses. And item A is consideration of annual paving bid for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22. Ben, you're up.
Ben fixed several places in the city that people called about and stuff. And I want to tell you I really appreciate that. The place we backed and just, for to take care of, he's took care of us. I appreciate it.
Yes, this is a annual contract we have each year with our south is the one that we're looking at now. It's a south contract. And if we want to renew it...
The first one, Ben, is the paving.
Is the paving, okay. That's one that we have each year that we have with Joe Malone on it. And he does a good job with our paving. I've not found anything wrong with his work. And he's been real flexible with us when we need things done. And I suggest that we continue on with him.
Yeah, we, we've had a long-term relationship with these folks and they always work with us. They, they try to make things happen the best way, the cheapest way they can. A lot of times, just like we're getting ready to do Main Street down here, we're going to have to do a lot of grinding. I know y'all have had complaints, as I have, about the roughness of the, the road as you come across the railroad track on the Main Street. And so we're going to have to grind that down. And so they're, they're trying to figure a way to, to get that done as quick as they can down there. The, the paving's not the issue. It's getting the grinder. That grinder's in high demand. And so we, we want to get that done as quickly as we can. But they do, since a lot of our jobs are little jobs, they, being a big company, they are really good about working with us to try to work us in and get these little jobs done for us as quickly as they can. Because they have lots of huge jobs that they could spend all their time on and, and never have to even fool with us. But they, they, they really go out of their way to do little projects for us when we need them. And that means a lot.
I see, I don't see a number attached to the bid. Is, we extended the contract, but we don't have a number.
It's like a cost per tonnage on the mix. I think it normally runs, and it varies according to market. It's normally around 45, 47. And the high test stuff can go up to 90, but we don't...
We don't use it. Yeah, that's what they have, they put on the interstate. We don't use it.
But he does quote it for us. So this is just extending the, a contract that we had last year for another year.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it is, it is a new contract in the sense that it covers the time, but it's just extending the current contract.
I make a motion to extend the contract, second.
All right. We have a motion on the board then to extend the current contract with Newport Paving with the street department. It's been properly seconded. This will need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries without opposition. Next item is consideration of annual salt bid for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22.
And this year it is for $94.14 a ton is what they've quoted this for this year.
And that's the same as last year?
Yeah, same thing.
I make a motion to approve this bid.
Have a motion on the board then to approve the annual salt bid for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22. It's been properly seconded. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Orderwoman Luanna Odinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes. Thank all you park heads for always trying to take care of the city. All that you did, you did a good job.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right. Item 11 is comments from citizens. Are there any? Here is none. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.